Meeting called to order. Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, moment of reflection. We will now slip the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As complied with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, P.O. 1975, adequate notes of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notes was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and The Star Ledger on January 16th, 2025, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We're now on special event applications. Today I'll be filling in for Alicia, so we have two items. We have the Heck Street Block Party at First and Second Avenue, and that's going to be September 27th. And then we also have the American Shore and Beach Preservation Association National Beach Sweep at the Asbury Park Dog Beach on Saturday, August 23rd. Do we have any questions? All right, moving on to items to be presented, I have a marriage from the City Council. Councilmember Bez Anderson?
None for me today.
Thank you. Councilmember Chapman?
I'd just like to acknowledge a couple people today. Many of you have seen a lot of the headlines in the news about all of the rescues that are happening in our oceans along the Jersey Shore. So I just want to acknowledge the work there are lifeguards and their staff do in order to keep our swimmers safe here in Asbury Park. It's been a really rough summer out there for so many Jersey Shore communities, so I just want to thank all the people that keep us safe. And I also want to acknowledge Tom Pavinski and the Environmental Shade Tree Commission. They've been out there making our city parks look absolutely gorgeous. They've been working two days a week, also giving away free produce at the produce market here, so thanks to Tom and all of those Environmental Shade Tree volunteers that helped to make our city parks look beautiful.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Nothing.
Thank you. Mayor Moore?
Nothing, thank you.
I think you did. Did he?
He, Angela.
Oh, you did? Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
All right, moving on to marriage and the city manager?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. A marriage and the city attorney?
Nothing for me tonight.
Thank you. We're now on to public participation. May I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation portion of this meeting is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and there will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker.
Good evening. My name is Richard Skuria. I'm an attorney in law from the Hall and Neiman and Wright. Our business address is 3499 Route 9 North in Freehold. I would like to address the board today in public, and then I have a few will follow concerning my representation of the Hope Academy Charter School concerning it to the Asbury Park Zonion Board. I represented them in regards to the placement of a modular trailer on the site. The purpose of this trailer through federal funding was to allow a library for the school. The school doesn't have a library. The students had to go to the public library, and this allows a library on school site for the kids. One of the conditions of the approval from the board was to get the approval from this council to have the existing fence encroachment that's on the right-of-way be approved. So for history, previously, the fence has been on the right-of-way at the time, and the board required us to go before the city council to have approval of the right-of-way, or we've had to move it. This was heard in executive session. I sent forth a letter as to request for why we needed that approved, and we did receive the response in July after executive session, and it was granted, both conditioned upon a lease agreement of three years at $2,500 annually, which could be renewed for additional five years on that. And we're here just to respectfully request that if this board can reconsider any fee on this right-of-way because of this school, and there are several reasons why, I'll just do them very quickly. First of all, this Hope Academy is a public school. It gets public money, and this annual fee will take money away from the kids for the school. Secondly, this school was purchased by Hope Academy in 2016. The fence has been on this property for some time. If you look at the row of fences down there, the fences are all in the same line on the right-of-way. We submitted this application before the board. We did not touch the fence. We did not do anything with the fence, but just by the fact of putting a modular trailer on the site triggered that issue. And if the Hope Academy is required to do this lease agreement at $2,500 annual fee, they're not going to be able to afford this. There's limited funds out here, and if that's the case, they're going to have to move the fence back and take away playground area. The school relies upon public money, and the school will have no choice if this fee is required and the lease agreement is required to move that fence back affecting the playground area. It will reduce the size of the playground. This is not your usual circumstance where a private homeowner comes, wants to build an addition, and wants the extra property in the right-of-way. We didn't touch this fence. We're just putting a modular trailer. There's very limited funds. We spent a large amount of money.
Sir, your three minutes are up.
Okay. So I would just request for this board to reconsider the decision, and great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Should I begin? Okay. Good evening, council members. My name is Devisha Pratt, and I am the superintendent of Hope Academy Charter School, and I have been there since, in that capacity, since 2014. I actually started at the school in 2003. I'm a proud graduate of Asbury Park High School and a lifelong member of this community. I come before you today not just as an educator, but as someone deeply committed to the children and families of the city. Our request is simple. We are asking the council to allow the existing fence at our playground to remain where it is and where it has stood for at least 14 years, maybe longer. The fence borders the outdoor play space for our 309 scholars. Moving it back six feet or requiring us to lease the strip of space for $2,500 annually would not only be a financial strain on our nonprofit tuition-free public school, but it would also reduce the space where our children learn, play, and grow. Hope Academy purchased the property at $601 grand in 2016 from Brian Keening and the Friends of Hope Academy Incorporated. At no point, neither then nor when we rented the property from 2011 to 2016, was the fence ever in question. For 14 years, or as I stated earlier, maybe longer, it has been where it is now, and it does not extend any further into the city's right-of-way than any other home on that same block. We were shocked to learn that we might have to pay such a significant lease fee for the land since we've been there this amount of time, especially since we have not expanded or renovated the property beyond adding the modular unit or library for research, something that many schools do. I ask you, what will the city gain by reclaiming this narrow strip? What will it be used for? Across the country, cities have earned or entered into symbolic lease agreements with public schools for sometimes only a dollar for the use of the right-of-way, because this is something that the cities understand that schools give back exponentially in education, community engagement, and future leaders. At Hope Academy, our scholars have donated to the Asbury Park Library for over 15 years. These students, staff, and families have been given back to this community that they love. Many of our graduates are now voting members and contributing members of the Asbury Park City. The Board of Trustees and I always ask ourselves one question when we are thinking of all the decisions that we have to make. What is in the best interest of our 309 scholars? I urge you to ask yourselves the same question tonight. Please partner with us. Keep the fence where it is. Remove this extraneous lease agreement, and let's work together to do what's right for the city of Asbury Park. Thank you.
I'm sorry, ma'am. I just didn't get your address in the beginning. I just didn't get your address for the record.
My address? My personal address? For the school?
The school.
School, 601 Grand Avenue.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Jeria Flores, currently residing at 1028 Sewell Ave. I'm a proud graduate of Hope Academy Charter School, class of 2018, and now a new staff member at Hope Academy Charter School. Hope Academy is more than just a school. It's a safe place where children from our community come to learn, grow, and prepare for their futures. For many of us, it is like a second home, hence why I'm returning. The fence the city is asking, the fence the city is asking the school to move has been there for years, protecting the safety of students during recess, dismissal, and community events. Pushing the fence back might seem like a small change, but in reality, it takes away space where kids play, have morning gatherings, and feel secure. That space matters to us, not just for physical safety, but for an overall sense of belonging in the community. As a former student, I'm asking you to reconsider. This is not just about the fence. It's about protecting a place that has shaped so many of us into the people we are today. Please allow Hope Academy to keep its fence where it is so it can continue to serve the children of Asbury Park the way it always has. Thank you for your time and for listening to the voices of the people who live in this community and take stake in its future.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm here. I'm a parent of a student of those 309. My son Grayson will be going into the third grade. I know for a fact, if you have children, when they get off of school, before they go to school, one of the only things you will hear as a parent is what happened at lunch and what happened at recess. For my son, recess and lunch go hand in hand, and I know that out there on that playground is where imagination, creation, and connection happen. It's where you find your best friends. It's where you have the freedom to be free again, use your imagination fully. And for that to change for any child, I would hate to see that happen for any one of the students who attend Hope Academy Charter School. I've lived in Asbury Park. I've lived in Bradley Beach. I'm a lifelong local, and I really would love for everything to stay the same for my child through his time at Hope Academy Charter School. Thank you.
Ma'am, can I get your name for the record, please? Ma'am?
Oh, my name is Catherine Birmingham.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Palace Hal. I'm a first-grade teacher at Hope Academy Charter School. I have taught at Hope Academy for 20 years. I have seen Hope Academy accomplish great things. I have seen students graduate from college, go back into the community. We just saw one of our young ladies and also work at our school. They have become police officers, serve in the military, and in some instances, as she said, come back at Hope Academy. At the heart of Hope Academy is our mission. As you know, it is no secret that our students are living in challenging times. For some, there is uncertainty. There is fear and confusion. When our scholars come to school, they leave the cares and the worries of life at the proverbial door, at least until 3:00 P.M. It is at school, on the playground, where students run, play, sit, chat, and learn. Tonight, I'm asking you not to push the playground fence six feet inward, which will significantly decrease the playground space. Please do not deprive our scholars by ordering us to move the fence. Please leave the fence where it is now, allowing our students to continue to use the playground for exploration, celebrations, gym, morning gatherings, performances, and oh, so much more. Respectfully insisting that if the fence is not moved will cause Hope Academy to pay a leasing fee, what is at the crux of this dilemma really is a mobile library. A mobile library for our students. The intention of the library will be to provide a definite, a definitive place for students to borrow books. At Hope Academy, of course, we have books. We receive books from our school, but also teachers provide. We get donations from books, and we want our students to continue to be able to read to grow, for the literacy to improve, and for them to continue to be able to take books home, knowing that they came from their library. Because, listen, make no mistake, at Hope Academy, we always find a way to meet our students' needs. They are not just our students, they are family. We are a community. We are a family day in and day out. Being able to provide our students with a mobile library will exemplify our core values. I am asking you to not only hear our words, but I'm also asking you to hear our hearts. I ask you to applaud our resourcefulness. I ask you to try and understand what we are trying to accomplish. So please don't penalize our students, our teachers, our staff, our administrators by forcing us to move the fence. In closing, I thank you for listening. Please let our fence stay where it is. Please let our students continue to play and to grow and to feel safe and to be encouraged and to just really, in these days, just get to feel like kids. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, Grace Rotundo, 1513 Park Avenue.
You guys speak up, I'm sorry.
Grace Rotundo, 1513 Park Avenue. And I'd like to say, leave the fence where it is, leave our library alone, and leave our memorials alone. But I also have a question for you, since you've gotten so many complaints about raising our taxes. Do you have any information available for the seniors where they can get their senior freeze, where they can get their information on how to get a rebate on their taxes? Can you tell people? I have who they should call. Do you have it?
Yes. Is that your only question?
Pretty much my only question.
I don't want you to take away any of your time. So if you have more questions, answer them.
No, that's my question. Do you have that information available?
Councilwoman Anderson answer, because we've been promoting having workshops here, giving everybody addresses to Go Path, Senior Center. So Angela?
Okay, thank you. The last Thursday of every month until December, you can go to the Senior Center, which is on Springwood, and from 9:30 to 1:30, they will assist you with the application in New Jersey Pass. We also had workshops here in July, June and July.
Well, that's pass, correct?
Yeah, sorry, but you could still go.
Okay, so then it will be the Springwood Center for the seniors to go there.
Yep, until 1:30, the last Thursday of the month.
Okay, actually, I do have one more question. I have time. Why are we referred to the Board of Ed if we have a problem with our taxes?
Why what?
You referred us to the Board of Ed, Board of Education?
Who referred you?
There's a letter that came out.
It said if you had any, there is a letter explaining why the increase of taxes were, and said if you had questions about the Board of Education tax, attend their meeting.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
As far as any information you're looking for, which you asked, as far as anything going on in Asbury Park, not just the senior freeze, please go to our website, join up. You'll get a news blast on a Thursday and a Friday with that information, the meetings you missed in June and July, and anything else in the future, from entertainment to concerts to anything to do with the city. So please, not just you, anybody out there, just go to our website, sign up, and you'll get two news blasts a week with anything and everything going on in the city.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shana Family Lounge, 1509 Park Avenue. I have a little cold, so bear with me. I know it's nothing that could be done here about my taxes, but I need to know, like, these incentives y'all giving to people that buy property on the beachfront, I feel like is affecting our taxes. Although y'all saying that the school board taxes, which is $12,000 extra, I don't even see what's being done there. Y'all saying that if y'all didn't give these incentives, maybe it'd balance out. That's all I have to say. Or, no. What type of incentives y'all giving? I heard it's a tax break for 10 years, 20 years, 30 years. I just feel like y'all are trying to make or sell a house that we can't even sell. I can't even fix my driveway because my taxes are so high. How could I sell my house when I can't fix the house? Like, I'm not even trying to sell it, but if I did want to sell it, I can't sell it. It's a no-no situation, a no-win situation. Like, I think y'all not looking out for the people who have been here 30 years and longer. Y'all not looking out for the people who've been here 30 years and longer, and it's really like a shame because y'all seem heartless, like throwing up all these places. I don't even go to the beach, but when I go down there, I see five and six and seven developments going on, and like, if they throwing them up that fast, that means y'all letting them do it for nothing, like, and who's paying for this? I don't care what y'all say, we're paying for this. You can't tell me nothing different. And y'all are the only ones that can change this. It's not a state thing. This is an Asbury Park thing, and it needs to be fixed because there's a lot of people in here that vote and live here. These kids that's growing up, in a couple years, they, like, just the way they voted y'all in, they can vote y'all out, because we need somebody that's going to represent us, and y'all not doing that. There's no way in hell my taxes should be going up $18,000 in two years. That's crazy to me. And I'm the only one on my row that's, the only black person where I live at, paying $7,000 more than everybody else on my row. I feel like that's a problem. Am I going to fight it? Yes. But do I have to continue fighting this? I don't want to, but if I have to, I just will.
That's not even a question.
Wait, 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 wait a second, Pam. Okay. Number one, you have every right to appeal your taxes. Are we listening? Okay, and it's, I'll check with the tax assessor tomorrow to see if what you're saying is accurate. Are we listening? I tried to answer some of your questions, then I'm going to ask your question, so I want you to listen. Okay, I'll make it really fast. Can you correct me if I'm wrong? Your house is on the market for sale, correct?
No, it's not. It's, I just, that was...
Okay, your house was on the market yesterday for sale for $1.8 million, and your house is assessed for $1.2 million. So according to like, your numbers and our numbers, we're under-assessing you. If you sell your house for $1.8 million, your neighbors and everything, their taxes is going to go up, because that's what it's based on, values of sold houses. So your house was on the market for $1.8, and your tax assessment is $1.2. So for you to say like, we're picking on you, it's kind of like confusing to me when you're asking $600,000 more than what we're paying, charging you in tax.
I was testing the market. My house was on, was on the market for that amount, because I was just testing the market. It been on the market for that amount for a whole year. I'm going to take it off the market. My tax, my property is, my property tax is going up, but the value of my house is, is going up faster than the value of my house. My house, the value of my house only went up $100,000 since y'all put another $1,500,000 on, on, so...
Okay, and as far as like your earlier remarks, as far as like all the buildings on the beachfront, we agree with you. That was a deal cut in 2002, when different people were in office and different employees worked for the city. We cannot change that deal. I mean, it's illegal to unilaterally change a signed agreement. There's no way, there's no court in America that will let us change that deal. Do they have the right to build 3,200 units? Yes. Are they going to build 3,200 units? No. They're going to build less than 2,000. So as much as everybody's complaining, oh, there's so much going up, going up, going up, this goes back to 2002. None of us were up here. Many of you weren't in Asbury Park at the time. It's something we're stuck with. You're absolutely right. We agree with you, but there's nothing legally we can do to stop that. Okay, thank you. Pam?
Thank you. Hi, Pam Major, 1201 Springwood Avenue. And so I was trying, I have two thank yous to give, so I was trying to figure out which one was going to go first, and this, this last exchange told me. And so I want to thank the council, particularly councilperson Anderson, for coming to our civics lab in, at Drew University that I facilitated. And I was teaching the young people about local government and how sometimes you get questions as a councilperson that you may have some knowledge of, and you're able to answer, and then sometimes you don't, and you get back to people. But this exchange is something that we shared with the young people, and I have to say, councilperson Anderson represented you all extremely well. We did have one student from Monmouth County that is going to be attending the school this fall, and then, of course, I'm the facilitator and I live here. So I wanted to publicly say thank you, because it really helped them understand the tension of being on council and how it can be a difficult situation. And, and so your presence helped them understand what I was sharing, but then when they did it for themselves and wanted to take recess and wanted to do some other things because of the heat that came from the questions, and you, you know, you're representing us, so you got to get the heat sometimes, but it was really a wonderful opportunity. So thank you for being here. I wanted to come and publicly say that, since I had an opportunity to do so. My second thank you really still involves councilperson Anderson and the Recreation Committee. The line dancing in the park for the month of July and then one day in August was an amazing, amazing opportunity. People came together. It was community. It was fun. It was way too hot, but it was fun, and I hope that you can find a way, whether it's, you know, indoors or outdoors, to continue that. I think it was a wonderful way to bring people together, to exercise, it's something that we need to both drop calories and stress. So it was really wonderful, and I really hope that you find a way to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on one second, sir, please.
I want to thank you, Pam, for thanking me, and the main thing, I had a wonderful time at your event, and anytime that you need me, I'll be there. And in regards to the line dance, well, I have to speak to Ms. Alicia, but we're looking forward to doing some more giddy-up this fall, so thank you very much. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening, Councilman Mayor. Thank you so much. My name is Sammy Espinoza. I'm with the Building Labor's Local 77, and I am here to speak on ordinance 2025-21, which authorizes the city to issue a $36 million bond to improve the water shooting plant. I appreciate the steps that you're taking to protect the community, safety, and health, but I have some concerns. The last major public work project in Asbury Park was the firehouse. Despite warning from local union members, the project was awarded to a non-union contractor, Wallace Brothers, and the city found itself in the middle of a labor unrest. Non-union concrete subcontractor, CCL Construction, ended up on the project. The Department of Labor has since issued violations against CCL for not paying prevailing wages, obstructing an investigation, and working while unregistered. The violations were so serious and widespread that the state had to issue a statewide stop work order against CCL. It was the, it was the third time the state had ever took this step. I don't think that type of contractor belongs on taxpayer-funded projects in Asbury Park. I know the city has since issued, I know the city has since passed a project labor agreement policy ensuring union labor on public work. I thank you for taking those steps. I hope that tonight you can guarantee that this type of exploitation will never happen again in the community by ensuring that the city will build this project under a project labor agreement. And my question to the council would be, what is the plan for this project? Thank you.
Wait, okay, well, do you want an answer?
Yeah.
Okay. When the firehouse went out for bid, we did not have a PLA. Nobody had approached us about doing it. Nobody approached past councils. So that has been changed. We adopted a PLA, and anything over $5 million has to be done with a PLA. So 36 is more than 5, so yes, there will be a PLA. We good? Thank you.
Hi, yes, Wayne Darling, Peach Publishing, Neptune. I first want to talk about the incredible impact that that small parking lot has for the students, and not just the students, the community also, because it's, it's what children really rely on throughout their day sometimes, where, you know, they anticipate these activities and... you know, they anticipate these activities and, you know, bringing bringing um other people to the city and, you know, seeing that in the morning while they walk their dog or things like that. It's it seems to be very inspirational and I think I think it it's it's very concerning because I don't feel like the children really have a voice to really put put their opinion out there on what it would really, what it would really do if it was taken away. And I'm also a little bit concerned about all the speedy development that is endangering some of the landmarks, specifically downtown. A while ago, I spoke with Ms. Clayton about my grandmother's memorial on Grand Ave between first and second. Yes, it's in time, I got you. And I feel I feel like that should be addressed also because it's on the same avenue that my son goes to school at. And he goes, when they go to the library, he actually goes past that memorial. And, you know, he's very proud to, you know, have that have that there. And it's adjacent to the the library, which is also, you know, seems like it might not be there for too much longer. So I'm just trying to begin the process on how to make it a historical landmark because of her philanthropy to the city. And she's the only female in that downtown area with some kind of memorial and I feel like it should be addressed and preserved. So yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, I do know. It's very nice to see you.
Yes, I know.
Thank you for coming in. I have reached out. The problem is the memorial is on private property.
Yeah, that's right.
And I have reached out to the owners a number of times and have never received a phone call back.
Yeah, I actually, I actually, I was able to speak with them, but they kind of gave me the runaround and, you know, they weren't really letting me know who was really in charge of making that decision. But they did, they did give back to me about it. But I still really, I still really didn't know how to take the steps to, you know, continue to put that on. But yes, I did reach, they did reach out to me about the private property thing.
So why don't we take this offline?
Okay.
And let's see who you were talking to and we'll follow up.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Jean Del Mesronneuve, Third Avenue. Good evening. I'm here tonight to follow up on the false alarm issue we discussed a few months ago, specifically repeated calls to housing authority properties. The Asbury Park Fire Department runs over seven thousand calls a year, more than double Cranford, New Jersey's three thousand calls, despite Cranford's population being thirty six percent larger. I know Cranford's numbers because I served on its town council and oversaw the fire department. Here, a huge share of our calls are false alarms, mostly from housing authority buildings. I believe there's eight in total. As I've mentioned in the past, the Third Avenue building alone costs the city about one point four million dollars a year in calls. These are multi-story buildings, so every alarm sends a ladder truck, an engine truck, an ambulance and a battalion chief, often for nothing. Other towns don't accept us. Cranford charges, Cranford charges between fifteen to a hundred dollars per incident after a few free calls. Cranberry, New Jersey charges two hundred and fifty dollars after the third. Applying those to just the Third Avenue building alone would generate between two hundred and eighty thousand and seven hundred thousand dollars under Cranford's model. Or if you go with Cranberries, that's seven hundred thousand to one point seven million dollars under Cranberries and that's real money and that's just for one building. Asbury Park, as I've seen, has no such ordinance that I'm aware of, meaning no financial incentive for the housing authority to fix the problem. So taxpayers like me, whose property taxes have doubled in five years, keep paying for it. You sent me to the housing authority, nothing but blank stares and deflection. You sent me to the chief, the fire chief, which actually the housing authority sent me to the fire chief, nothing productive, but maybe except for the background check that he did, that he did on me. Enough delays and enough asking for me to do the legwork. So what I'm proposing is a simple fix. Adopt a false alarm cost recovery ordinance, starting with the housing authority properties, and set the fines high enough to reflect the cost of these large-scale deployments. Direct the city attorney to draft it now. Every day you delays taxpayer money burned and more risk to residents who truly need emergency response. So I brought this up on a number of occasions and I'm getting the runaround and I've even spoke to a couple of, even the battalion chief and their heads are up in the air and nothing seems to be going on with that. It's a simple fix. Just draft an ordinance. If you start charging them that amount of money, the alarms will stop. When I spoke to the housing authority, they're looking at me and like, well, we kind of fixed it and I have, I believe it was a fire marshal on the call. He's telling me my numbers are wrong, but he can't prove my numbers are wrong because they're not. So.
Okay, and I remember when you brought it up the last time and Mr. Cruz, the city manager, wasn't on board then. I know Mr. Cruz and the fire chief met with the housing authority the other day. I don't know if this subject wasn't brought up. I know there is an ordinance someplace as far as like, if my home alarm goes off so many times a year, I get fined. So I'm sure they have got to be covered also. So there may be an ordinance already online.
Yeah, so I haven't seen the ordinance. I couldn't find it anywhere. I spoke to the, one of the battalion chiefs about it. I asked him, are you charging for this? He said, no. And not in a, he wasn't happy that they weren't charging because it's a public safety issue for them and for us. And yes, selfishly, I live across from it. It is literally like two or three times a day for for absolutely no reason and the housing authority could just look at it and say like, whatever, not my problem. It's not, it's not right to you. It's not right to the fire department. It's not right to us as taxpayers.
Right.
So the only person, only people kind of winning out of it is the housing authority. Penalize them for it and they'll stop or evacuate the building. It's a fire supposedly, so.
Okay.
It's just, it's an easy, it's an easy enough to draft an ordinance for it.
Can you leave a contact number or something that Mr. Cruz can get back in touch with you?
Sure.
He did meet with them. I don't know if you discuss this particularly, if you have any data, but let him look into it, let him talk to the chief. They did meet with the executive director, what issues they talked about. You're right, again, if my alarm goes off, I think more than three times a year and it's not right, I pay a fine. So I don't know why it's not being done by the housing authority.
And our commercial spaces pay a fine if they, if their alarms go off downtown because I've gotten complaints from people.
Yeah, is there?
So I don't know why the housing authority would be exempt from this fine.
We, I tell you, I'm just looking now. We do have an ordinance in place. There are two, if your fire alarm goes off twice, you get warnings. The third time you are cited and the fine is, I think it was fifty dollars for the first, a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars and it goes up from there.
And that's, that's residential, correct? For justice and justice?
No, it's, it's, it's any, it's any person. It's any fire alarm.
And the only reason I'm saying that is because from, for a commercial property or a multi-unit property like that, you're not just getting an engine truck coming out to your home, you're getting four deployments and that's at least ten fire department employees coming out there. So that, that's why the numbers are exponential and that's why that, those, and those numbers that I use are FEMA numbers that I actually got from the fire chief of Cranford. So I can't see that the numbers aren't accurate. So there might be a balance to that and just saying, okay, residential, because I think that would, might be a little high for residential on false alarm, but for those commercial properties or for the housing authority properties, that's a much bigger point, so.
Okay, again, if you could leave contact information with Mr. Cruz, we'll go from there.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up again.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Tara Tyson and I have been a teacher at Hope Academy for fourteen years. I am here tonight to speak on behalf of our students, staff and community about the proposed plan to push the playground fence back six feet. While six feet may not sound like much on paper, for our students, it is a tremendous loss. This space is more than just a playground. It is our gym, performance stage and gathering place. It is where our students run, play and build social and physical skills they need to grow. It is where we hold community meetings, where we celebrate our students' cultures and where we have hosted graduations and talent shows. It is where our community comes together as one. Reducing this space would take away opportunity for physical activity, limit our ability to host events and diminish a place where students feel safe, proud and connected. For many of our children, this is the only open space they can access regularly. We ask that you consider the long-term impacts this change would have on our students. The loss of six feet can mean the difference between a soccer game and no game, between a stage for a talent show and an empty patch of asphalt. Please let's preserve this space for our children who need it the most. Thank you for your time and for keeping our students at the heart of your decisions.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jessica, five twelve Second Avenue. Well, I got the notice today for about, I should be actually volunteer for, as we speak, for a community of, for an event for the community, but I'm here. I was told about the situation and since now I am a parent, I am making this as a priority. So I just wanted to say that I find it very silly of the situation and I'm speaking, trying to keep it short and sweet, but it just sounds a very, I don't know, it just sounds very, the kids need to play and I have elected almost of you, like I'm very familiar with a lot of you, your faces. So I think that in a way as the city and as your power, you know, help, help, instead of going like against the school and the education here in Asbury Park, since, like I said, now I am a parent, I went to the Asbury Park and we kind of need help improving that education here in this town, but that's a different topic. Again, I think that instead of just trying to put a fine to have kids play, it just sounds very, you know, we have other priorities. A lot of here, we're residents of Asbury Park. I love this town. I'm very, you know, I can see that, yes, there's business and money involved and everything, but, you know, the people who have elected you, we have elected you for a reason to help us and we have a voice to speak. So again, at the end of the day, this is, even if it was not the charter school, even if it was the public school, I will come and show my support because I see a lot of the teachers who appear and I didn't know who was coming and who, but again, I should be in a different event for the community, but I am here because this is important. We should be helping the kids in this, in this town. The kids in this town need it the most. We need to change as a, as a city, actually, to have a different name than, than what we're basically stereotyped as, oh, that's you're from Asbury Park and you went to school there. So again, even if it's a public school, I will still be there because why? The families are here. They come to school, right? We're not going out of town to go to a better school. We're choosing to be here. We choose, we're parents, we're families. At the end of the day, we have our lives and whatever and you guys can understand if you're parents or not, but in a way, let's try to work with the education system in Asbury Park and the families and that will bring a better community. I hope, hopefully that maybe you guys can come and see the school, get to know this kid. At the end of the day, you know, you guys are role models and you guys should understand this should be for all this society that's happening and the phones and everything, the kids need to, need to take care of their mental. It's very important and I'm a very advocate of that. So let's just not go against, let's try to work together as a community and why we elected you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Douglas English and I'm actually here, hearing the messages from Hope, Hope Academy and I'm here on a mission of our own. Hopefully, we're going to get granted the permission to do valet parking downtown and I think that it is, could be a good situation. I just wanted to put it out there because I was hearing all the messages about money and stuff. We could definitely use a parking lot after, you know, the school closes after hours and stuff like that. So I just wanted to put that out there and I also wanted to just say that me and my team were extremely humble and grateful to be potentially part of the community providing services down downtown. So that, that's pretty much all my message right there.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Cynthia Norkus and I've been an educator in Asbury Park for over three decades. I've been at Hope Academy since two thousand and two. Our school's playground is an essential part of our students' development and taking away an even small portion of this space will have significant lasting consequences impacting morning arrival, school community gatherings, which is an integral part of our charter, gym classes and necessary physical and social activity for our students. Our school community, parents, students and teachers alike are deeply concerned about this potential encroachment and any cost financially that we would have to incur. Please reconsider.
I'm Tom Pavinski, sixteen oh seven Emery Street. I'm the chair of the Asbury Park Environmental Shade Tree Commission and we're responsible for all the tree canopy as well as all the gardens that are in town, which I know many of you have seen and many of you actually participate in and thank you for that. I have two things tonight. One, I'd like to, a public thank you and a congratulations to our city manager. He called me into his office one day and he said, come here, look out the window. And I did. And he said, look at that pretty garden right in front of City Hall. I said, it is pretty. We put that there. He said, but look around it. It's dry. It's dead. It's ugly. There's nothing there. So what did he do? He inspired the Shade Tree Commission to get pots, to get plants and to beautify the front of City Hall. So we have a whole bunch of new pots out there and new plants and lots and lots of people are enjoying it and, and thanking us for it. But he's the man you have to thank. Thank you, Adam Cruz. Thank you very much. Secondly, I have an urgent request, actually. This morning, the Environmental Shade Tree Commission and the DPW workers went to St. John's Island. Now, St. John's Island is a piece of land right off Grand Avenue, right at the top of the bridge. Many of you have probably either been there or seen that. It's a beautiful space. However, it recently has fallen to kind of disrepair because all kinds of things have been happening there that are just not good for our, for our society. There's been drug trafficking going on there. There's been all kinds of dirt being thrown around and garbage left there. And so we had to clean that up. But in order to clean it up, we had to really go around the entire perimeter of the island and cut down all the old, rather new growth that was there that was preventing anybody from seeing into the island, especially the police, because they drive by and they couldn't see anything because there was so much there. Well, we've cut it all down and it looks amazing. You really should go and see it. It's really quite beautiful. But I also have an urgent request in terms of that. There is a probably ninety-year-old, maybe a hundred-year-old red maple tree that is dead and it's, it's, it's really presenting a hazard. There are branches that are just completely dry and are starting to fall. And if we're inviting people to use the island and inviting people to feel safe on the island and inviting people to just relax on the island, we have to get rid of that tree. I was there this evening, took pictures of it again, as I usually do, and it's definitely a dead tree. My urgent request is to get in touch with the DPW, who would therefore get in touch with whoever takes it down because it's massive. It's, it's probably about fifty, forty inches this wide. It's a huge old tree. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
So the man you praise, Adam, what are you going to do to help him? He said, I'll take care of it.
I'm sure he will. He's cleaner than I am.
Anybody else like, anybody else like to be heard? I have a question to close.
All in favor?
Aye.
Plug participation is now closed. We're now on to the minutes from July twenty third. I have executive and regular meeting minutes throughout a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to the consent agenda.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to the consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular items, then said items shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On consent agenda tonight, we have Resolutions 2025-357 and 2025-360 through 2025-369. Do you have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Erickson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Moving on to individual resolutions, I have Resolution 2025-370, Resolution authorizing the payment of bills.
Move it. Second. Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Erickson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
No.
Resolution 2025-371 has been removed from the agenda tonight. Moving on to Resolution 2025-372, Resolution to refund overpaid municipal charges for various properties.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Erickson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-373, Resolution authorizing the award of a contract to operate a valet parking service concession.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Erickson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-374, Resolution of the Municipal Council of the City of Asbury Park authorizing the submission of an application by the Asbury Park UEZ Coordinator to the New Jersey Urban Enterprise Zone Authority for Enterprise Zone Assistance Funds for the Asbury Park UEZ Area Public Safety Patrol Program for fiscal year 2026.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Erickson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-375, Resolution authorizing the City of Asbury Park to participate in intra-county mutual aid and assistance agreements with participating units in the county of Monmouth.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Erickson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-376, Resolution authorizing the acceptance and execution of an emergency operation plan for the City of Asbury Park.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Erickson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
That's it.
Resolution 2025-354, Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Asbury Park to enter into a fourth amendment of the subsequent developer agreement with Asbury Partners LLC as master developer and Asbury Park Urban Renewal LLC as subsequent developer in connection with the redevelopment of that certain real property located at Block 4105, Block 1.01, 1201 Ocean Avenue in the City of Asbury Park, formerly Block 4105, Block 1, 2, and a portion of 3.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Erickson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
No.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We have, in addition to tonight's agenda, Resolution 2025-377, Resolution appointing a municipal clerk for the City of Asbury Park, Anthony Cucci, RMC, CMR.
Move it.
Councilmember Bez Erickson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to...
In three years, you get 10.
Yeah. Moving on to ordinances for introduction, I have Ordinance 2025-22, Ordinance establishing a restricted parking space for use by a handicapped person at properties located at 17 Ridge Avenue in the City of Asbury Park and amending and supplementing Section 7-36 entitled Handicapped Parking of Chapter 7 Traffic of the Revised General Ordnances of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey.
Move it.
Councilmember Bez Erickson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Moving on to ordinances for second reading and public hearing, I have Bond Ordinance 2025-21, Bond Ordinance providing for Phase 1 improvements to the city's water wastewater treatment plant appropriating $36 million therefore and authorizing the issuance of $36 million bonds and notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof authorized in and by the City of Asbury Park and the County of Monmouth, New Jersey. Before we open up, we have a brief overview from Caroline of CDM Smith.
Caroline, before you start, let me just explain a little bit to everybody. The Asbury Park Sewer Treatment Plant has always been, originally it was right on the boardwalk, and then that was closed down in the late 80s, and the new plant was built around '82 or '84. At the time, it was state-of-the-art, and it's mostly underground because there is no land. Before that was built in '84, the city spent about a quarter million dollars looking to build it elsewhere. There was no place else. Everything in Asbury Park goes back to Mr. Bradley when he put in the original terracotta pipes, and they're still down there. Everything's gravity-fed. We have no pumping station. The sewer plant we have now is getting to be outdated, needs major repairs, and that's what we're about to do today. But before we did this, we met with Ocean Township, we met with Neptune to see if they were going to take us on so we wouldn't have to spend this type of money. It's a lot of money. You won't see a large tax increase on your taxes because of this, because it will be